All right. Good evening and Happy New Year. Welcome to the first work session for 2024 for the Bladensburg Town Council. Thank you to everyone joining us here tonight, and thank you to those who are tuning in from home or who will be watching the playback. At this time, we're called to order and we'll proceed on to the agenda, to item number two, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any comments, questions, or amendments? I did want to ask the council for a friendly amendment with respect to the timing because we have our consultant here on legislative matters along with his team. If we could forego a couple of the items listed on the agenda since they're already on the seven o'clock meeting. And so that would be the community leaders' meeting update. That would be the budget update and review for Mr. Tenelli and Mrs. Bailey Hedgpath. And what was the other thing? The town administrator updates. So that way, I'm not rushing Mr. Perez as I normally do. With sessions starting, we just want to make sure that we have enough time to talk through everything and come to a good place. So is there any concern? Yes, Councilmember?
I have one correction. Were appointments of committees?
Oh, when we, we'll do that when we get to the minutes. Yes, ma'am. Okay. So with that, I'll now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Any nays, the ayes have it. So again, for the public's awareness, what we did was just bumped the community leaders' meeting update, the town administrator update and budget update and overview to the seven o'clock meeting as those items are already listed, so that we can have more dedicated time for the legislative discussion tonight. So with that, we'll move forward to the approve of the minute. And with that, I'll call for a motion to approve the December 11th work session minutes.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any corrections or amendments? Councilmember McBride?
One correction on the COG. My alternate is not Mayor James. My alternate is Ms. Councilmember Blunt. Yes.
Yes. And I think what happened is in the work session, I had raised my hand, but then in the seven o'clock meeting, we discussed it again before the vote. And thank God, Councilmember Blunt said, I'll be the alternate. So I think that's the reason for the discrepancy. But if we could make that amendment, just so it reflects with the resolution that we voted on and what we sent over to COG. The other thing I wanted to note is under, on page one, under pedestrian safety updates, it says peace crossing, and it should just be peace cross. And then on one, two, at the end of the third sentence, on the crash report, it should say to the Prince George's County State's Attorney's Office. Yep, no worries. Oh, no. Work session. Yep. Gotcha. And then at the end of sentence three, it should say on the crash report to the Prince George's County State's Attorney's Office. Right now, it just says to the attorney's office, so it's unclear. And then on page two, under COG appointments, it should say region forward coalition. Right now, it says reaching. And I just may not have enunciated, so. Yeah. And then we have the correction about the alternate. Were there any other corrections to the minutes that the team saw?
Yeah. And the other minutes is actually what we did.
Yep. Okay. So is there, okay. So I'll now call for the vote to approve the meeting minutes with those corrections. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. So at this time, we don't have anything under appearances, so we'll move forward with the Board of Elections Supervisors update.
Hi, Mayor, Council. I'll keep this brief. The, I have submitted some information in regards to the last meeting of the Board of Elections Supervisors that met on January 3rd, 2024. Basically, the board looked at some materials that were provided to them from College Park. We went through those materials. What we'll be doing is that we're going to break up each one of those items into separate meetings moving forward. And then what will happen is the board asked for us to, for staff to put together a timeline with next steps and a work plan. I let them know that we were hiring the town clerk hopefully by March. And so that I will be filling in for the February meeting, which will be on, I believe, February 21st. But what we'll do is the new clerk will help to set up that timeline. We started to draft it out, but this new clerk will come up with the timeline for the next year of all the items that the board will go through, and they'll have regular meetings. A question was asked by the board. What was their timeframe from the standpoint that they are nominated in November in the year prior to, so, I'm sorry, March of the year prior. So March of 2025 is when they renew. So this will give them enough time to prepare items for the next election cycle. And so I'm here to make any, answer any other questions you may have.
Yes. And one thing I will say, and I know we've had a lot of turnover in the past, I would say four years-ish, is that it tends to be rushed because we come back into the new year of an election year. And at that point, there's so much going on that by that March meeting, we forget, or it's very last minute. So I think it would be better if we could set an internal goal that by the end of this year, to aim to have that in a good place, so that that January 2025 meeting, they're presented, we vote on them, so that it doesn't create any issues where we're missing our own deadlines.
I would agree, Mayor. I think the good thing, though, is maybe to have a layer of transition between one board and another if you do the reappointment. So you could do the appointments and then have those two boards work together, because I think there might be some value if there are any changes. So that's what staff is sort of, so we'll put something together that'll let you do both, so that you'll do the appointments earlier, but at the same time, that the term of this board will then, so that they can work together to kind of bridge across, because I think there's some stuff that gets lost if you do appoint new members. So that's my only suggestion to that.
I think that makes sense. But having just gone through it, Councilmember Blunt and Councilmember Dixon, really to everyone, does that sound reasonable to focus on that? And there's no harm in doing it early. The charter just says it has to be done, I think, before the first Monday in March.
In March, right. So you can do it as early as you want. So if I'm talking to the town attorney.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for that update. And then moving into new business. And actually, I want to ask the council, because I know sometimes with the fire department, if the alarm goes off, you guys have to go. And I don't want to lose you. Would the council be okay if we let the fire department go ahead, so they can go on in case they get a call for service?
Yes.
Because again, the legislative conversation will be pretty lengthy.
Yes.
Looks like that's all right. All right. So with that, Chief Sumner, I will turn it over to you. I want to acknowledge we have Chief Dave Sumner here with us. We have President Gary Katz, and also Donnie Wells, the money man treasurer, for the incredible Bladensburg Volunteer Fire Department.
Good evening. Yeah.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Hope everybody had good holidays, safe holidays. All right. We are here today to discuss a new general order that came out from Prince George's County Fire EMS Department. This general order is General Order 5-19. It was released December the 11th, 2023, and is the emergency transportation fee, also known as the ambulance billing fee. This general order has been in effect for a number, excuse me, the original general order has been in effect for over 10 years with very minor changes. During the course of that general order, there he goes.
Case in point, we just lost President Katz. So again, thank you for letting them go early.
My apologies for that. During the course of the time, the ambulance billing fee was split up by 25%. Your provider and your driver was 25% depending on your affiliation, whether you were a career person or volunteer. The ownership was 25%, and then maintenance and fuel was 25%. When this general order originally came out, there was only nine companies involved, and this was under Chief Mark Bayshore. Chief Bayshore looked at it and initially disagreed with ambulance billing, but then realized that the revenue would benefit Prince George's County as well as the volunteer fire departments. He then set forth a plan in action, which allowed for ambulance billing. The union, the career personnel, if they provided two people on the ambulance, would receive 50% of the billing. That was agreed upon by the IFF Local 1619. Chief Bayshore made it very clear that the ambulance billing was designed for the purchase of volunteer apparatus. And that is one of the things that we use it for. This general order that just came out on December the 11th is going to put a stop to that. The general order specifically states, after October 1, 2023, no ambulance billing or otherwise revenue will be allowed to be used to purchase new apparatus or make payments for new apparatus. In this general order, it also changed the 25% marker that was developed originally. It is now saying that everyone will receive 20%. 20% for the driver affiliation, 20% for the aid affiliation, 20% for ownership, 20% for maintenance and fuel, and 20% for EMS operation funds. Under the EMS operation funds, Prince George's County Fire EMS Department, in meeting with the fire chief, she stated that the money would be used for ALS supplies, which is advanced life support, BLS supplies, EMS contracts, medical directors, other personnel salaries, vending machines, restocking of the vending machines, and various other items. Myself, Treasurer Wells, and President Katz met with the county fire chief, and we advised her that 20% was a high number. We advised her a year ago that we would agree to 5%. The other 36 volunteer corporations agreed to 5%. In November, Treasurer Wells, along with the Volunteer Association, met with the fire chief and told her again, 20% was too high. And when this general order came out in December, it still remains at 20%. To give you an example of how it would affect Bladensburg Fire Department, as well as the other departments, in four years timeframe, the Bladensburg Fire Department for EMS supplies have spent $22,893.33. That is from county records, not to mention the money that we have spent on our own. If you look at those same timeframe for the last four years, if you take fiscal year 2019, for our ambulance billing revenue at 20%, the county would take $50,469.32 away from us. If you look at 2020, it would have took $32,804.59. 2021, $34,570.96. 2022, $23,404.98. And at current year, we're at $19,329. As you can see from those totals, that number is higher than what we actually use in supplies. Again, we're not opposed to working with Prince George's County. We're not opposed to 5%, which we believe along with 36 other corporations is a reasonable number. But this is a bit high, and as everyone knows, we work off the donations and bingo money. So that is a very large chunk of change to lose.
Thank you, Chief, for giving us the update, and then also for the invitation to attend the association's meeting a couple of weeks ago. Wanted to find out if there is a plan in place to get support from the other municipalities, and if help is needed in that, because we're happy to consider helping to advocate, but don't want to be the only ones out there, particularly given your help in other communities. You don't only serve Bladensburg.
That is true. And I can tell you that Ryan Pidgen, who is the chief of Hyattville, has gone back to his mayor and council. Chief Howard and Chief Lee Havens have talked to Bowie. And I know that there's a couple other ones. Greenbelt's fire chief is supposed to be meeting with their council and mayor, because this is going to affect a lot of departments in a large way.
Got it.
We are all trying to go to, speak to the mayor and councils, but not everybody's as supportive as the town has been.
Gotcha. And so I'll check to see when the next meeting is with the Prince George's Mayor's Association, because I think just giving you the chance to explain it and just share what the concerns are, you know, for the volunteers could be helpful for them. And then you've got them all there together. But just want to open it up to the council as well for any thoughts or feedbacks on the matter. So I just, yeah.
Could, ma'am. When that meeting does happen, if you could let Treasurer Wells know, so that him as the first vice president of Volunteer Association could attend, so that he could speak on behalf of the 36 corporations.
Okay. All right. And Councilmember Brown, because I know you have experience volunteering on one of the committee, the community.
The Prince George's County Community Advisory Council.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, one of the things I think if, if we can just look at getting input or buy-in from the other municipalities and kind of staying neutral, but also, you know, maybe preparing a document that shows, okay, this is, you know, this is some of the pros and cons of it, and, and maybe circulating that. And that right there, I think will give a little bit more clarification or explanation to some of the other municipalities to say, okay, you know, while, you know, while, while we're just kind of in a neutral place, but we want to support and we understand, but, you know, kind of, kind of like.
Right. We can put together basically a presentation for them, so that they understand what all is going on and the effect that it's going to have across the board.
Yeah. And then I think presenting that to some of the, that documentation to some of the other municipalities as well may help, because, I mean, we are just thankful and grateful and glad that you all are located here in Bladensburg, but definitely getting buy-in from the other municipalities.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilmember Brown, I'm glad you brought that up, too, because the next Port Towns quarterly meeting, we're supposed to host that, so we need to schedule it for this quarter. But that's another opportunity where we can let President Wells know, let you know, Chief Sumner, and have you come. That way, it's not just Bladensburg. You get all the port towns in the same room, understanding, so they can ask questions, make sure they're comfortable advocating on your behalf as well. So that would be another upcoming opportunity. We normally hold it in January. However, the fourth quarter meeting was a bit late. It was in December, right before the holiday break, so it may be early February possibly. But can definitely make that happen as well.
But any, oh, sorry, yes. The time parameters, what are the, the time parameters around this, this being effective or?
So the initial date of effect, it was December the 11th, 2023. But due to the fact of the pushback she was getting, the fire chief's office was getting, she has postponed it to July 1.
Okay.
But July 1 is the implementation date of when it starts.
Okay. That is really good for us to understand. So we've got some time to help rally, get the information out there, and try to get some support from across the county.
Yeah. Because I think once you know, if something is presented, and where there is, is equitable, where there's a balance, you know, I think that's, that gives us a good, good opportunity in front of the.
It should be also noted, I'm not sure if the council is aware or not, last year in 2023, the fire department brought in $32 million in ambulance billing money, of which it does not go to the fire department's account. It goes to the county general fund. And when the question was posed, what percentage goes to the fire department, the only answer that we received was $2.3 million comes in, of which the volunteers use sporadically throughout the year to make their apparatus payments. So from my understanding from the fire chief's office, other than that little bit of money that makes apparatus payments, no other money out of that 32 million goes to the county fire department.
The volunteer or the county fire department, the professionals. Okay.
And as I said at the outset of the meeting, we're fortunate to have our legislative consultant here, Mr. Perez, who works for us on the state level, but also on the county level. So as you're hearing this, Mr. Perez, any support that you can offer as well on the county level for just getting some reconsideration would truly be helpful, especially in conversations with the county exec's office, because the fire chief does report to her.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like it is. It's a pretty tense year.
Yes. It was definitely an interesting year, yes.
Great. So we don't have a mic, Mr. Perez. I'm sorry. So it's hard to hear you in the audience, but just wanted to make the notation. Okay. All right, Chief. So I'll follow up with you about the Port Towns meeting, the Mayor's Association meeting. You offered to get us, hand out one page or something that as we're talking, that we can be using those examples of how this would have a direct impact on the funding for the volunteers. And appreciate you also saying that you'd be open to presenting
Yes, ma'am.
the information at these groups, and as other opportunities come available, even maybe PG-CMA would make sense, because then you've got all the municipalities there, and you've got the captive audience to really help everyone understand.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. We appreciate you guys. All right. So next up, and again, Council, thank you for allowing them to go forward. I just heard one of the apparatus moving with the alarms and sirens going. The next item we have is our legislative update by Mr. Tony Perez.
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to note that you got a new version of Mr. Perez's information in the front of your book or right sitting there. Yep. There you go. That has some information. Thank you.
Ready for me?
Okay. Well, Happy New Year, all, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, staff, and the great town of Bladensburg. My name's Tony Perez. I'm the legislative consultant for LA Perez, representing the great town of Bladensburg. And we're happy to be before you today. Last time I was with you, I had an intern, Jamila. Gosh, Jamila's gone, but she's gone off to law school. We miss her. She couldn't do this while she was in law school. That is a requirement. But we do have Mr. Jonathan Brown. Jonathan is a Prince Georgian. He was the former president, HOA president, for the great community of Fairwood. And Jonathan's been hit the ground running, and he knows how much we have, and we know this is a busy town. But we appreciate it, because we know, we know this is the only female counsel in the municipal government, and we're happy to see it, as always. So I'll jump right into my report, because I know you have a hefty agenda. And again, we don't want to go over our time.
But again, now we have 40 plus minutes.
We have more time. We have more time, we know. And Jonathan's going to come up with me, because he's going to talk about some of the bills we have. But I'll just go over like kind of an overview. We've had a great pre-session. We spent a little time with the governor during some, some events, and we had some time to talk to him. And obviously, your local officials with Senator Augustine and Delegate Faneo and Delegate Ivy and Delegate Tavarez, who they do a great job representing the 47th Legislative District. There's obviously been some change in leadership with now Chair Ivy taking the helm at the county council level. So we should be able to work on some of the things that I know that we were interested in. We're confident that we can do some. But this is going to be, we know we have some budgetary items that we're interested in approaching this year, and we've had some success in the past. But the, you know, the governor, you know, he's, he's always optimistic. But we know, we listen to friends from appropriations. We know it's going to be some tough budget times. But the interesting thing, the chairman, who we spent some time with, Chairman Ghazoni of the Senator of Budget and Tax, you know, he, you know, in a, in a, you know, in a private setting, he was a little more optimistic, this being one of your normal budget years. I mean, we had COVID before, so a lot of funding and things came in. So we're going to look to talk about it. So we're working with your town, town manager, and we're going to be, continue to communicate on communications to try to pursue our funding for the new town hall and other, other matters. With that being said, the, the 2024 legislative session, you know, it's going to be a heavy focus on criminal justice. That, that is a heavy topic this year that we're going to look at some bills on, because, you know, obviously, crime is a major thing in our communities these days, and it's having an impact on our families and our personal safety in all of our communities throughout the county and the state of Maryland. So I know that's going to be something that's going to have to be discussed and figured out how we get there. Again, my, my opening is going to be brief. We're, you know, session starts tomorrow. You know, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, Wednesday morning. So Wednesday morning. So I'm putting my days ahead. I know there's the Maryland Democratic Party event for luncheon tomorrow. Hope to see some of you there. But anyway, we, we're going to have to deal with that. The other thing that Jonathan and I have been spending time on your behalf is looking at some of the local zoning bills. What you're going to get from us on a monthly basis is a monthly updated report of the local and statewide bills that we pursue on your behalf. And we'll make sure you get that report rolling through. We did a little bit of that last year, Madam Town Manager. You'll, you'll see that a little more, because I think you were just coming in when we were finishing. So we'll have that. But there are a few zoning bills that Jonathan will touch on that we, we see that maybe you have taken some potential positions on, but we may want to discuss a little bit further, because we got to think about if you're overview of what your, your great town's looking to do, they could have some negative impact somewhat on them, in our humble opinion. We can't tell you what to do, but we can obviously give our opinion, is what we're here to do. We're also going to be pursuing any, tracking any legislation that has to do with MAGLEF funding. I know the leadership here has made that a key priority, and it's been a key, key priority for communities surrounding, because that MAGLEF hasn't proven that it's going to have a stop anywhere in Prince George's County as it goes through our, our great, throughout Gray City here, and, and could have a negative impact, could put, you know, it's never been proven that it's not going to put people out of their homes. And so we have to be, we have to pay close attention to that and make sure we have the appropriate support for that. The other thing is just, we understand we're going to look at public safety, as you see. We're going to pay attention to that. Jazz Lewis, I believe, is the new chair of that committee, so we'll be paying attention to that, because we got to look at things as it impacts our police as well. So there'll be things that we're going to have to pay attention to, especially with what's going on. And, and like I said, it all, it's going to, it's going to all somehow coincide with what we're watching with criminal justice and other things. So we got to make sure, as much as we want our communities to be safe, but we also have to protect the people that are protecting us. So we want to make sure we do that. So I won't take a lot of time, because I know you want to have questions. Jonathan, why don't you come up and go through some of the brief pieces of legislation we wanted to discuss?
Thank you. I'll just step.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thanks for having us again tonight. We're really happy to be here. You have a great manager in Michelle. It's been wonderful working with her. So in terms of going back and forth with her to get some of the updates that you have tonight, a couple of key pieces of legislation I'll touch on is 105, 106, and 107. And let's go from, from good to kind of concerning. 105 is a really good piece of legislation. It gives you, it empowers Bladensburg to be able to have stronger zoning power, to be able to shape the community in which you desire and choose for it to be. So it definitely, and you, and as annotated, you are definitely supportive of that as a leadership body. So kudos. Definitely, we'll keep an eye on that and make sure that kind of trends in the right direction. Kind of jumping around a little bit, but going to 107 is a little concerning, something that we'll keep an eye on. Some of the more ambiguous language in it talks about the 25% of community residents or impacted residents have an issue with a proposed development. They have a standing to negotiate with, with the developer. Does it exactly specify what an impact zone is? Doesn't especially, doesn't is, where do the 25% of people come from or specifically? So could be some potential dangers there. And 106 kind of widows down and gives individuals the right to kind of halt a process. So have one person having an issue with a, with a development of sorts, having a standing and being able to put a stop to, to potential construction. So you want to have, definitely have control in your development, and residents' voices need to be heard. But somebody within the Bladensburg community who is definitely around and impacted and involved should have a stronger voice than someone who's not, who's not here. So those are some, a couple of bills walking through that. Tony has been watching closely as well. Have me watching, excuse me, closely for him as well. He's already on it, and he knows like the back of his hand. But so yes, those are a few things. You'll also notice there are some bills that are fresh, hot off the press. As of this week, they kind of released that they're going to be moving forward with them. Don't exactly have the bill on them yet, but we are following the synopsis that's been given. And we'll definitely, as Tony said in our monthly updates, give you more information on those. Some of those are credits for public teachers and things like that, tax credits for teachers who live in Prince George's County and things of that sort. So we'll keep you up to speed on that. That's a few. That's a few updates. And then as, as Tony said, thank you for having us here tonight. Any questions, more than happy to take them from the leadership.
Great. Thank you both for the overview. Mr. Perez, you look like you have something else you wanted to share.
The less we talk, the more we, we talked so much last time. So we tried to be as tight as possible with your time in respect of the town stock.
We definitely appreciate it. And just going through that information, appreciate you pulling out things that are directly affecting our community. I think you're right, one oh five dash two four is important in looking at local zoning support. And I see Delegate Holmes's name is listed here. So the testimony, please, you know, if he's in need of additional support, letters of support, those are the kind of things we need to know so that we can get with our town administrator to get them submitted and see if someone from the council can testify as well.
We can do that. I'll just say, yes, Madam Mayor, we'll make sure that happens. And just give you a little bit of background. Some, we have had other municipalities have done a resolution in support of that in case you want to, you know, look at that. I think it was the City of District Heights, sorry, did a resolution. City of District Heights may have done a resolution in support.
Can you share that with us?
Yes, we'll, we'll get it to you. We'll get it to you. They haven't submitted anything, but they, they do have it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure you have it.
And then I think you're right too, in terms of the legislation or proposed one oh seven dash two four. What's concerning there is that the way things are, someone who doesn't live in Bladensburg, say they live in South County, could protest a project that this council, our staff, our residents want just based off of the way this is proposed to be run. And so that is definitely concerning not having the say come from the local body in the local community who desire to have certain projects. But Councilmember Brown, you have some thoughts as well?
Yes. Going back to.
Councilmember, may I say this? Just FYI, that, this, those, the bill you mentioned, that standing, remember last year, the, what was the proposed piece of legislation from the county council came from then Chair DeNoga? He put it in and that would have had the same impact. This is, this is another way of getting to standing. But we already have a lot of rules as it pertains to standing and development in this county that, 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 a lot of checks and balances that, that definitely stretch the process out a little bit more. I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown, just a quick response to that because we already have to overcome the stigma that Prince George's County is difficult to develop. And developers want to go to other places for a reason. So it's not that we don't want to take in local feedback. That is always part of the process. But if we continue to move in that direction, we're going to turn away development and then we can't be upset that Northern Virginia has more opportunities for better housing, retail and the like, and we're still missing out. So I just wanted to put that comment out there as well.
Or Charles County that's open for business.
Exactly. And where there's this migration now from Prince George's.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's a good dialogue going on.
Just wanted to respond.
Absolutely. So one oh five twenty-four, when you talked about that, the zoning, given, giving the municipalities of Bladensburg stronger zoning power, what does that mean in terms of budgetary wise? I mean, how is that into, are you, are you saying the town of Blad, the municipality zoning authority?
Yes. We're, we're, that's what, no, wait a minute. That's what Delegate Holmes is putting in that it gives you your own zoning authority. But.
But I'm saying, but what, but what are the true real facts behind that? Because I, you know, being fact-based and really looking at the, the numbers. Because if we have our own zoning authorities, I mean, it sounds good, but, but, but there's a cost, there's a cost attached to that.
Well, let me throw in, I mean, let me just help with it. The thing is that it's going to, I know there's been discussion in the bill about having an opt-in clause, which means it gives you the option. If you choose not to weigh in, you can continue to do things the way you've been doing business, you know? Or you can be a little creative and work with surrounding municipalities to save costs. I don't know. I mean, but, but it's not going to force your hand because of the opt-in clause. We understand how it could have a financial impact. The goal of, from my understanding from Delegate Holmes, the goal is not to put municipalities out of business. It's to create opportunities for municipal bodies to grow and through economic development.
Yeah.
Yeah. And have some input, have the, have some control over the input. I mean, I, you know, there's one municipality in Prince George's County that has that authority and it's Laurel. And Laurel, Laurel's growth, you know, it's working.
And it comes at it. And I think part of it is, is it a cost or is it an investment? And I think it's very expensive to a community to have powers that be outside of the local authority making those decisions and delaying processes. And sometimes you have to invest in better to get there. And like you said, look at what Laurel has. And it, it may again require an investment. However, the look, the housing stock, all these other residual benefits, excuse me, would definitely benefit, you know? But I do appreciate the realization that everybody can't afford to do it. But we're now part of the new legislation, the Gateway Arts District. So could there be a Gateway Arts District Legislative Board? Or as part of the Port Town Sector Plan, a Port Towns zoning board or a combination of the two? So just, again, that's why the testimony is so important, having some flexibility from the legislature to see how we can make that work would be extremely helpful.
I, I know those in the, you know, that's why we're early in the session. That's, that's the beauty of this. We can talk about it and work out the nuts and bolts. And that's why we're, Jonathan and I and the team will be there on your behalf to ensure that we protect your interests down there. We, we get it.
Yeah, yeah. And really, and really looking at numbers, you know, you know, because I, I like seeing numbers. Because as stated, the investment could be a good investment. There are a lot of things that are good investments, but can we really afford the investment?
And Councilwoman, when Tony first mentioned this bill to me, I was, I, I, I said the exact same thing in regards to cost. And so we, we are aware and we've been looking at it. And there's a couple of models that are going on in other towns where they have, let's say, a planning, they have some planning staff, but they don't have as heavily of the planning staff. And they still rely on Maryland Capital Park and National Capital Park and Planning for some of it. And they're kind of existing, they're, they're still under Maryland Capital Park and Planning, but there are some municipalities, I would say College Park's a good example, where they have a planning director already and they have some, they, they have started to delve into that space. But they're still using a hybrid, you know, model with Maryland Capital Park and Planning. I mean, for coming from, coming from working in that, from Maryland, since working in Capital Park and Planning, I know how many resources they have. And I, it's a hard thing to give up. So I would say that's where, we will be measured and we'll look at how that would affect the town. So I think those are, you know, those are really good questions. And it was the same question that I proposed to Tony when we talked about initially.
Thanks for.
Councilmember Blunt or McBride or Dixon, any questions so far?
No, I was going to ask the same question. Is it a cost or investment? But the mayor already declared it.
Okay, thank you.
And so on the promotion of innovation, four oh two dash twenty-four, that's on the promotion of innovation, the creation of the independent innovation agency. Again, to use Councilmember Brown's words, it does sound good. We definitely, as a county, I think we innovate from that because Montgomery County is branding themselves protection innovation. And we're missing out on attracting those kinds of businesses. My only question was, is, in your opinion, do you think it's going to be feasible for the county to pull off number three, which is the venture capital fund where they establish the fund, it's a dedicated source to make this happen? Is that realistic?
In a tough, where everybody's complaining about money, I'm going to tell you, anything that has to do with funding is going to be very difficult this year. That's the easy answer to this. But, you know, as you go through the session, we may find that there's opportunities to create, you know, some of these things break out and they end up like in work groups so we can discuss it or they create committees to have, just to have a discussion about this stuff. I mean, that's a great idea. That's where we're headed. I mean, I'm watching some of these new innovative buildings that are coming in, developments in different parts of the county where there's going to be growth and it's going to create like five thousand jobs, but they're going to need things like that. It's going to bring money, but, you know, and that's already ready to go. But how do we get into the things that we're looking at in this bill? You know, where the funding is going to be necessary from the state and/or the county. So right now, everyone's, everybody's tightening their belt right now. So it's going to be a heavy lift. So we'll have to see what, you know, what, where the energy is for some of these things as we track them. And remember, just for those that don't know and haven't been through this process, there are four subcommittees that meet on a weekly basis that we track these local bills that we're discussing tonight, just for the public to understand what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
I would also add on to that, like Senator Watson's bill for metal detectors.
I was going to get to that. Yes.
It has money in it. It calls out the exact dollar amount that it needs. But to your astute point, venture capital is no money. It's just a creation of a, it's leaving it wide open to see if they can, essentially like Tony was saying, see if they can get funding.
That makes sense. So moving on from, from those, there was one, and this kind of came out of the Public Safety Forum, that Councilmember Watson, her husband, Senator Watson, had. Chief Collington and I attended this. And it was really honing in on the crime that's occurring and addressing it from a number of fronts, from organized retail, looking at juvenile crime and different facets of it. So four ten dash twenty-four, I recognized from that event and wanted to see, this is saying for accessibility for disabled drivers that basically service station dealers would have to provide fueling services at the self-service price to disabled drivers who display a disabled person's registration plate or parking permit. And then the hours of operation would be six AM to midnight. And just wanted to get Chief's thoughts as well as the rest of the team on that because I think, yes, the intent is good and it's there, but now we're telling small business owners that you have to hire another person. Personally, I think that's great. I look at it as insurance. Now you've got someone else there. It's not just the cashier behind the little glass, a second staff member. So sometimes there's safety in numbers and then preventing a disabled person from having to exit their vehicle and become a victim. But just want to understand, you know, Chief, from your standpoint, are we missing anything? Do, you know, do you agree with trying to push for this?
Happy New Year, everyone. Yes, ma'am, I, I agree that having that extra layer of eyes is somewhat some protection, even though we know the attendants won't be armed. But sometimes it's that deterrence that just by having that person standing there could deter, you know, people from coming in there, want to commit other crimes. So I definitely agree.
And it did know that it would also be required to have video surveillance. I don't think it's in the description, but it's on the website on the legislation. So that, Chief, I think is helpful to get it, being able to get the video footage should something occur. But again, there's a cost to install the cameras and make sure they're operational.
Well, well, people have to, you know, you have a business, you have to protect it. You know, security's important. So we know what's going on out here and we can't put it on, we have to use every, you know, being a business owner, but if I owned a service station or something like that, I can't put it all on the chief's back to protect me when he has to protect thousands of others. You know, my business has to have all, be equipped. So it's an investment. It's going to be back to the investing thing. You know, sometimes, you know, you have to, you can't rely on the state, county, the municipality to, to pick up all your laundry for you. You have to take care of your business. You have to put your own money into certain things so you can help to protect yourselves in this, in this, in this instance. And I just think that sometimes I, I used to say that when I was with the labor union, I used to say, we can't legislate everything. You have to be able to sit down at the table and bargain like you're supposed to and don't bargain wages and benefits in the legislator. It's not their responsibility. It's ours. That's what we get paid to do. So that, so I see that the same way. So you have to decide what position you want to take on it and being clear. I mean, if you're asking a business owner to put more invest to keep your, keep the, you know, people safe, that's where we are. Because we can't put it all on the backs of, of our, our public safety police that take care of us.
That makes a lot of sense. And I might step in some mud on this next one, but four oh nine dash twenty-four. So this is asking for representation on this health and wellness working group. But then when you flip a few pages to three oh three dash twenty-four, they want to have more cigar lounges. So do we want to be healthy or do we want to encourage people to smoke? So.
I'm, I'm actually going to be careful with that one because I, 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 I've been laughing at people that want to be healthy, you know, that say they're healthy. But then you go behind the scene and they got a burger. Ah, veggies over here, burgers over there. And, you know, we, that's legislated, right? So, well, listen, I, you know, it's, it's up to you, Mayor. I always say, if we're talking about something, I know the one with the cigar lounge is just really where you want to get to. Okay. Here's what I'll say. I always would say, I would, I would advise, if it's not impacting your jurisdiction, I would say let that jurisdiction play in their own area because you don't want them to start when you want something. It's sort of like standing to come back and get in your arena when you're trying to move on something, you know? And that, that's the only thing I would say about that. You know, it's, you know, some people want it. They've been trying it for a long time. It's one of those things like, you know, alcohol in grocery stores. One of those things, somebody's, the state's been trying for a long time and there were limits to how, why they can't sell. If you know in the state, you know, in this county, there's three or four authorized, grandfather, let's call them grandfather grocery stores that can sell alcohol, but others can't. You have to go through the process of trying to change that. And, and the laws have, you know, has kept that at bay. But with that being said, it's the same thing with cigar lounges. I remember it came up a couple of years ago and it was stalled. But it just, it's one of those things that's not going to go away. I would, I would, I would just caution against if it's not going to, if it's in a certain legislative district, let them handle their business.
Any questions from the council on that? And then just more of a question, but on five oh one dash twenty-four. So this is calling for a comprehensive study to look at the schools and changing the location of the administrative building. That just seems like an expensive feat for the county council or the county government in turn.
They want to move the.
Yeah. So, but it just seems pretty expensive. If we're already saying we're facing shortfalls, we need metal detectors and all these other things, is that really critical?
Well, I'll say it is. If you've been to the school board building, I think it's, it is getting older. It, it's maybe time for a move, sort of like it was with the county council when they moved to Largo. And it's obviously having the Wayne Curry Building has made a big difference for those offices. I'd like to see it function a little more, but it's there. But, you know, we have, we have buildings, some buildings sitting. So maybe, like we have the old county council building, you know, who's going there? That's always a question, right? That's still sitting there. What are we going to do with some of the places there? But I just think because that building has had a lot of years of, of service, it may be time to make the move. That's my opinion. That, that's what they're, that's what they're looking for. That's what the study's about to see if it makes sense. So let's see how that goes as we continue to track it though, and, and we'll keep you informed of its progress. But I think it's something that it's been in discussion for a little while. It's not a, not a new topic. It's just, it's just moving to the front burner show, I'd say.
I'll take one real quick.
Yes, Councilmember Brown?
Just real quick on this, five oh four dash two four. The bill aims to enhance early childhood education by requiring certain public school, high schools to offer career technical program by an early childhood education. Can you talk a little bit to that?
I'll take a little bit more time with that one. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I got to take a little bit more time with it. Can I come back to you on that?
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Because there's things out there like that. You have people that always talk, we don't know if a financial literacy thing is going to come. Education's always interested. It was interesting to watch how everything transitioned just to go to an all-elected board and some of the things that got put in that legislation. These things are always interested as it comes, interesting, excuse me, as it comes out of the House and gets into the Senate. So I just think it's something that we're going to have to pay attention to, to see how. And, and let me just be clear, with the new structure of the House delegation, we don't know what those committees are. we don't know what those committees are really gonna look like. What we do, we can look at it, but I just haven't got a concrete answer as to where everybody's gonna be. And we'll take a look at the website again, just to see who's there. But, you know, now we know that Nicole Williams is now the chair of the House delegation, and Delegate Andrea Harrison has now moved to vice chair, and I believe Kevin Harris moved to three. So, it's, the committees are gonna, 'cause Nicole's gonna come off of the committee, so now, 'cause the chair is not on a subcommittee, so we're gonna have to figure out how those committees line up. So, give me, just give us some time on that, let us work on it as we track it, we'll come back to you.
And that establishment of the childcare synergy.
We'll, we'll look at that, just give, give me time, that's sounding more money, sounding more money, basically. So, that's why I said, just give us time on that, I need more time with that one.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Brown. And then, the other thing is, I know you mentioned the MAGL legislation, so Chair Williams had her two ninety-five transportation meeting on Saturday. Did say she's prefiled her bill, so we will be ready to support. But it just seems interesting, if we're talking transportation budget cuts into the billions, that this would be a no-brainer to just take that off the table. She did say too, that all the state funding that has been allocated for it is exhausted, so the state doesn't have anything else that they can invest in it anyway, which I think is helpful as well, so...
I, I would tell you, obviously, letters to the committee, but I think you have a very strong community presence here in Bladensburg. I don't normally recommend this, but at this point, I think we watched our time with dealing with other municipalities around this issue. Some are there, some, you know, like they're a little slow getting to the issue. We'll just call it that. I think it may be wise to just kinda prepare a letter, and, you know, let the governor know where you stand on your position, as well as when we prepare for the committee. That's, that's where, that's what I think. He's new, and this issue's been out there a long time. I mean, I've seen these committees, I mean, I was, I've seen the one, I was at Flower, when this first started, Flowers High School, when four hundred people show up in a high school about an issue, there's a problem. And when you go to every community day, and the community, there's, there's, you know, there's people setting up their booths around this one issue, you gotta be ready. I mean, I saw it in Bowie, I mean, it's been out there, Green, I mean, it's out there. So, it hasn't gone away, we just have to be cautious in watching who crosses lines, and find out who, you know, just gotta look and see who's representing the other side of this issue. For years, when I represented the, for nine years, I represented the county council, but during that tenure, we were opposed to the MAGL, just so everybody knows. Now, I don't know what our position is today, I mean, I just don't know. But we, we were opposed unanimously opposed.
Thank you for that. And we did host Lieutenant Governor Miller here for a meeting, a briefing with the Port Townsend, and had the opportunity to make her aware of our position as well. I know she's an engineer by background and was surprised, but when each community shared the reason for the objective, she was very, or, yeah, for their opposition to the project, she was open to the concern, so I think we have that on our corner. So, now, we only have about fifteen minutes left, and it's all public safety. So, chief, drum roll. I put in the packet with Mrs. Bailey Hedge Pets, oh no, we still need you. No, 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 yeah, for you guys. Chief, in the packet, I shared the LRs from Senator Watson, from the public safety meeting we went to, I guess that was late November, and just shared it at the December meeting, asking the council, knowing we would have our legislative team here to take a look at those. And there's a bunch, so I'll try to go quickly, so we don't go over our time, but just in trying to summarize them, I'll just roll right through. So, the Violent Firearms Offenders Act, basically, it labels as a felony instead of a misdemeanor, the use of a firearm with a magazine holding more than ten rounds of ammunition, or an assault weapon, in the commission of a felony or a crime of, a crime of violence. Second, the bill delays parole eligibility for prohibited persons who are caught possessing firearms. And so, the first thing I thought about, I won't say the young man's name, but he's deceased now, because he succumbed to the street violence that he was, you know, a part of for many years, but that's been an ongoing frustration. Someone's on parole, they get caught with a gun, and they're back in our community with a box on their ankle. And we're talking, like, at one point, one of the weapons this young man had was military-grade green-tip bullets, which could go through someone's house, you know, just... And so, I'm just putting all that out there to say, as this gun violence increases, I definitely recommend that we consider supporting this, and wanna hear from chief as well, because it, like you said, it's not just dangerous for the community, it's dangerous for the officers who are out here patrolling our communities.
I think the community's calling it the catch-and-release program in the county.
It's unfortunate, but that's what they feel like it is. You catch 'em, and they go in, and next thing, they're out with a box on them. Catch-and-release program is what communities call it.
Yep, so, I definitely agree again with the mayor with this. We sat in on that seminar with Delegate Watson and Councilmember Watson, and what we're seeing from public safety is, we just had an issue beyond this, that the young man you just mentioned, we recently just arrested an individual that murdered someone in Washington DC, got released, got put on the box, came to Bladensburg, shot up his girlfriend's apartment, went to another location in Prince George County, and shot up the girlfriend's mother's house, all while being on a box and threatening to kill the child as well. And thankful to our detectives and plainclothes unit, we were able to arrest this individual. But this is what we see, this is, that's just one incident, but this is happening across the board, that these guys are being back on the street before the officers actually finish police reports. They're getting low bonds, to no bonds, personal recognizance, they back on the street committing more crimes. So, we would definitely like to see this bill supported.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
So, let me save you a lot of time, mayor. These bills, if you would send the one, bills of interest to us, we'll add them to our list. And what you're gonna see on our tracking list that you have here now, it's gonna expand. You're gonna see the hearing dates, okay, so we can keep you informed, and its progress as we're tracking, and your position that you've taken, obviously, will be on the spreadsheet. So, just give us the list, and we'll track them, so we can make sure that if you're gonna come in person to testify, we can work to get you signed up, obviously. You know, I know the mayor's very good, if she's gonna sign up, she does it all. So, so you have a great leader here, that definitely, leadership period, but, but we know if she's gonna sign. So, if we, we can let you know, but all these things that are important, whatever positions you take on sport, we'll track them, and we'll be there, and we'll lobby on them if, on your behalf or whatever, because there's obviously some good chat, I mean, we have, I believe Jazz Lewis is now the chair of this public safety subcommittee. You know, he's from the county, and I'm sure he would be interested in having those conversations with us as well. So, we'll, we'll talk to the appropriate people and do what we can to try to get these things moving forward. So, if you save your time, if you want, just give us the list.
Yep, we can do that, send it over to you. And then, chief, just for awareness, there's another one here on illegal and stolen firearms, because at the shooting that took place at Morgan State University and also at Bowie, those were with stolen guns. So, they're looking at technology, and they talked about it at that forum that we attended, that can capture, or actually require gun dealers to register the guns, so they basically fire a shot, it's put into this database. So, if a mass shooting like that were to occur, they, from the bullet casings, they can tie it back to that database to figure it out. But I'm almost wondering, chief, is, I, I see the value in that, but is something, or should we be recommending ShotSpotter-type technology? Not saying it's that, but something of that nature to solve these cases?
So, the, the situation you just mentioned, mayor, is the gun dealers now will be finding a test shot. That ballistic will be uploaded to NIBRIS, that's the national information base that tracks ballistics and firearms. So, that way, if that gun is stolen, and it shows up in North Carolina and gets involved in a shooting, they will run that recovered shell casing through the NIBRIS system, and it will show up and say it was stolen from Bladensburg. So, that is the technology that we wanna make sure that we stay on top of. Yes, our ShotSpotter gives us the location, and we have, since we've had it, recovered numerous shell casings that are going into the database. Bladensburg just joined the I-Ballistics. That now, is now giving us real-time crime scene processing of firearms, like we're getting returns now back within minutes with this new technology. We are the first police department in Prince George County to have that. So, we are getting ahead of the curve in terms of recovering these ballistics, but also enhancing our ability to track, identify, and arrest, and hopefully get good prosecution on these violent offenders.
And chief, I would tell you, that stuff, that should be in the testimony, that, what you said, I mean, I know we can come, but that should be in the written testimony, as well as the oral, to discuss what you're already doing and the progress of how things work. 'Cause that's gotta be, that'll be helpful with some of this stuff.
That's great. Well, we only have two minutes left, so was there anything else that we missed?
Sorry, mayor, I was just looking at the organized retail theft. Did you wanna continue to support and watch? 'Cause I was gonna put that on there as a support and watch, because that's something that we had talked about. And then, trying to just go into anything in regards to the fentanyl, or any of these other ones, as far as the firearm dealers are still there, but the, any of the other firearm ones? Do we just have them to watch, most of these that are in here?
I think watch and likely to support, for the most part, just because they're addressing the violent crimes from different perspectives. So, I think we definitely need to be made aware if they're coming up for hearings. That way, we can come back to the council and say, "This is happening, do we wanna submit a letter?" Councilmember Blunt, do you wanna go speak, or whoever, in addition to law enforcement? So, that way, we're making sure that as the legislation's coming up in hearing, there's support for it, and it doesn't just get, you know, chopped off the chopping block.
And then, I'm just gonna say, the other one was the juvenile justice reforms. I know that for, that chief wanted us to also watch that one as well. I was thinking that was the other one that I just wanted to mention too.
Definitely, because with the children under, I think it's thirteen years old, they can get caught with, you know, a serious assault weapon, and they're released right back to their parents before the officers can finish writing the report. And I mean, they, some of them get real snippy with our officers, "Is my mother here yet, so I can leave?" Because they know. And there's adults who are part of these crime and racketeering, you know, organizations that are using these kids to do these crimes, because they know they won't get stuck in jail. They'll get released, and they can just ship them over to Northern Virginia, let's say, to do the same thing. So, definitely on the juvenile crime, and also the one in particular, holding parents accountable. Because if this child is repeating offenses, that means something is clearly wrong in the home. So, engaging with juvenile justice services plus social services holds that parent accountable. And then, there's consequences if the behavior is still continuing in terms of moving that child out of the home into some other type of care. So, we'll get the, we'll just send the whole packet over.
Mayor, members of the council and staff, that's what we're talking about when I started with criminal justice. It's all of this stuff that's gonna fall, and I said it was gonna be a major issue. This is, this is what we're talking about. The parents thing is a big deal, and it's taken years to really get into having that discussion. I mean, the children know the law, and they're, they're, well, they're very confident in their knowledge of the law, so I won't use the other terms, we'll say it that way, and we have to be careful.
Mayor, if I could just say one thing.
Yes, please, chief.
And the other part of that is, the officer's ability to question juveniles now, that has been taken away from us. So, I will just say, like, my new position with the Chiefs Association, this year I'll serve as the president. So, I will, I'm already slated to be in Annapolis, talking about a lot of these bills already. So, I would love to partner up with you down there.
Whatever you need, we'll be happy to do that, it'll be fun, chief. I'm glad, actually, it'd be good to hear somebody coming out public and talking about the things we've been talking in the back room for years. I mean, it's, it's, you know, society has changed dramatically, and, and, you know, your position, you know, first of all, I can personally say thank you, because I know what it, I don't know what it's like to be in your shoes, but I see how dangerous it is every night. What we see on TV is another thing altogether, but being there and being responsible to protect us, I mean, thank you for, you know, what you do. So, yes, it'll be my, my privilege to walk with you in Annapolis, so I look forward to it.
So, I think we achieved our goal. We had well over twenty minutes to just talk a little more at length about concerns with some of the legislation you all shared with us. And in addition to that, some that we've been looking at being better informed on. So, I think we have a robust list, we will follow up with the public safety items for sure. I'm not sure if you got this memo from Senator Augustine. He held the last District Forty-seven meeting in Mount Rainier, that was early November. So, he gave us a handout with his priorities and just kinda walked through, so we, okay.
I can look at it, it's in my email.
Okay, perfect, so just, yeah, helping us to stay on top of that would be appreciated.
If you wanna send it to me anyway, that's fine.
Okay.
Whoever sends it, mayor, whoever sends something to me.
Yes, we appreciate it. Very nice meeting you in person, and thank you for all your help getting us the documents.
We look, we look forward to representing you this evening. Thank you for giving us time, thank you, have a great evening.
You as well. Yes, so at this time, we have one, two, three items that we will have in the seven o'clock meeting, so we will wrap a little early, if that's okay, give folks a break in between meetings. So, that means we've come to the conclusion of tonight's agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride, any comments or questions? I'll just say, I think we covered a lot, and appreciate everyone jumping in and sharing their feedback. So, with that, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, we're adjourned, and we'll see you back at seven, thank you.